Okay, Michael, we are live and you are able to start the public session of this meeting.
Very well. The executive session having been properly concluded, we will now proceed with the remaining items on the agenda. I'm calling specifically first case number 2135. And that was continued from August 19th, 2020. It's the application of David J. Fergal trustee of David J. Fergal Trust for a special permit we have received. The property is located at 15 Packet Landing in Orleans. And that was the subject of correspondence from the applicant's agent Stephanie Sequin requesting that the hearing not having been commenced, that the applicant had abandoned the project and therefore she requested on behalf of the applicant that the application be withdrawn without prejudice. Is there anyone to speak to that particular request?
I have a question on behalf of the before we vote, and that's the question to address to town council as to the practical effect of withdrawal with prejudice or without prejudice?
Yes, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Ford.
So an application that is withdrawn without prejudice is clearly not subject to the two-year bar of returning to the Board of Appeals for the same relief. They could file immediately and they wouldn't be subject to showing significant and material changes in the application to both the board and the planning board before they could bring a fresh appeal for the same thing. If an application is drawn with prejudice, then arguably the two-year bar would apply. And so the only way you'd be able to return to the board within the two years is by showing to the satisfaction of this board and the planning board that there were significant and material changes in your application, thus allowing you to proceed within that two-year window.
All right, a follow-up question, if I may. So if it's withdrawn with with prejudice after the passage of two years, is there any additional burden on the application?
Not that I'm aware of.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ford.
Welcome. Mr. Chairman, with that, I'm going to sign off if that's all right with you.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. We appreciate your presence tonight.
I'll move to allow the permission to withdraw without prejudice.
This is in case number 2135. 2135, is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion on the motion? It's a virtual hearing. I should say then we will conduct a roll call vote. Mr. Waugh.
Again, if I'm a voting member, I'll vote yes.
I think
I vote present.
Very well, then in that case, I will designate the following members as constituting a five-person forum for the purpose of case number 2135. Myself, Mr. Waugh, Ms. Eckhart, Mr. Cole, and Mr. Tom. Mr. Waugh.
Yes.
Ms. Eckhart.
Yes.
Mr. Cole.
Yes.
Mr. Tom. You're muted, Bruce.
I apologize, Michael, yes.
Myself, yes. We will record present votes for Mr. Mulligan, Ms. Van Gisem. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, just a slight correction of the minutes, I made the motion if if there's a voting member is not a
Very well, then then I would then I will not be a voting. Mr. Mulligan.
Yes.
And Ms. Van Gisem will record you as being present and myself as being present. Motion still carries unanimously. And so number 2135 has been drawn without prejudice. Is there anyone to speak on case number 2137? An application for variance on behalf of the Nauset Regional School District? People are coming in, I can see.
Yeah, I'm just letting the audience allowed to talk, so in case anybody's here.
Yes, this is Anders Erikson.
There are a couple people, let me move them in as panelists.
Very well. While we're waiting for the green light, I wanted to mention members of the board that on September 21st, the annual orientation meeting for members of town committees, commissions, and boards, including our own, will be held as a virtual meeting at six o'clock. I circulated this to you at the end of August and I recommend it for your participation and discretion.
Hi, this is Anders Erikson from the Cape Cod Collaborative. Does everyone hear me?
Are you in?
I'm in, yes.
Are you in?
Mr. Erikson.
Yes, sir.
You are you are representing Cape Cod Collaborative in case number 2137, which I am calling for a hearing. That is the application of the Nauset Regional School District for a variance of General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 10, for the placement of a propane filling station, which is in a residential district on school district property. The property is on at 78 Eldridge Parkway, Orleans map 34.
I can hear you, there's some background noise.
We need to ask everybody that's not not speaking at the time to mute their microphones, please.
Very well, I have read the item for case number 2137 exactly as it was entered on the most recent agenda. Anders Erikson has represents the Cape Cod Collaborative acting for the Nauset Regional School District. I'm thinking I'd like to hear on the question of whether there's an exemption for these establishment of these propane filling tanks for because of the educational purpose. Parenthetically, I might mention that my memory is long enough and maybe there are other members also on the board who remember that when the greenhouse went up, we needed to permit the construction of the greenhouse next to the school and the middle school. And in the back of my mind was that a municipal use or an educational use ought to have been exempt. Now I see that there's been some talk about this in the application. Can you talk about that, Mr. Erikson?
Yes, we actually we have gone to our attorney to ask them what their thoughts were on the exemption. We did not get a clear ruling on it, but we believe that in this particular case, because it is for educational use, that this is something that, you know, we should be allowed to do. Just, you know, because of the location that we're in on school grounds.
The how long have the school buses been maintained on the premises?
We've been here with the collaborative for at least two years that I know of. Has Paul Hilton been able to get into the call? Paul Hilton is our executive director, I know he's been trying to get on. At this point, I've only been here for about a year or so, so I'm not sure how long.
Paul Hilton, I see, is on.
Okay. Paul, are you able to answer how long we've been in Nauset?
He's still muted, Mr. Hilton, you need to remove the mute. So that we can recognize you.
All right.
Good.
Good afternoon, sorry, that took a moment, I was excluded then included here. The collaborative has been working with Nauset for the past two years. The vehicles at that site have been at that site, I believe, for the past 10 to 20 years. This is not a new location for the parking of school buses. I believe the Dover Amendment may apply in regards to the zoning associated with educational use in a setting that is a school property. But as Mr. Erikson had alluded to, there's no clear case law on this. As there's not often a zoning issue that's associated with schools, in particular to school buses.
So the zoning board needs to make a choice here whether to proceed to hear the application and concentrate on the establishment of the standards allowing the variance or determine that the maintenance of propane filling tanks, which were would be used exclusively for the servicing of the school buses, which have been located on premises for at least 10 years, is sufficient accessory use to the educational purpose of the school. And in there, in that case, would be exempt from the zoning regulation by the zoning bylaw. Oh, so maybe subject to conditions relating to the dimension sighting of the tanks. That's what we're examining right now. Members of the board, you are advised that General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 3, states, "No zoning ordinance or bylaw shall prohibit, regulate, or restrict the use of land or structures for educational purposes on land owned or leased by the Commonwealth or any of its agencies, subdivisions, or bodies politic or by a nonprofit educational corporation, provided, however, that such land or structure may be subject to reasonable regulations concerning the bulk and height of structures and determining yard sizes, lot area, setbacks, open space, parking, and building coverage requirements." The application has included plans showing the proposed sighting and location of the tank and also a a view of the tank three dimensionally as where after the construction. Then if we make a finding that the proposed propane filling station is a sufficient accessory use to an educational activity, then Chapter 48, Section 3 would apply and would overrule or trump the zoning bylaw. The I'm not going to speculate on the reason for the enactment of what we call Dover Amendment, but it would eliminate the necessity, members of the board, of our taking evidence and making findings which would otherwise be required to support a variance. The Nauset Regional School District has proposed that if we do not determine that this is a sufficient educational purpose, that is a propane filling station, filling tank, then a variance would be necessary. I'm looking for comments by the members of the board. Or Mr. Erikson, I didn't mean to steal the application from you. It's quite clear and members of the board know exactly where the buses have been and the purpose of the propane tank. Do we have any comments from any members of the board as to how we might proceed?
Mr. Martin.
Mr. Tom.
This is a somewhat unusual request and the thing that leaps to my mind is the question of safety. And I don't pretend to know adequately about that, and that would be my absolute first concern. And if I were, because I hear the word propane and I get nervous. So if I had some assurance from these responsible people who I trust have that high on their agenda, that they conceived of this issue and could, if not assure us, at least indicate to us that their assessment was that this was a safe and appropriate use, that would help me in rendering an opinion.
It appears to me that part of the application included a the minutes of an informal review by the site plan review committee, which had contained comments concerning fire, water, health, conservation, and planning, and indicated that the applicant still needed to obtain appropriate permits from the fire department. Maybe that where does where what planning do you have concerning safety?
We've actually received, I'm sorry, are we speaking to Mr. Martin?
Pardon me?
Were you speaking to Mr. Erikson, Mr. Martin?
Yes, I was speaking to you, yes.
Great. So we've we've received approval from Greg Baker from the Orleans Fire Department. I do have an email with his approval for the site to store the 2,000 gallons of propane. And I asked him if I could have that, if I could have the actual document, but he said that once we build it, he will he'll come out and inspect it and at that point we'll get a permit.
Thank you.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman, that's will any other town vehicles use this site for refueling other than school buses?
Not to my knowledge, I believe it's only the school buses that we're going to be using, that we're going to be filling. We have 28 propane school buses right now that are being filled by an eastern propane truck. So we're looking to put in the propane filling station for ease of use so that we don't run out of propane just for safety purposes. It's actually been done by Eastern Propane in several locations that that they have this particular that they they put these tanks in and that they service them.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I would think if it's exclusively a school buses, we could fit it under the rubric of educational purposes.
I think so too. I can't I can't make that ruling unless I have a sense of the board, but the decision, I can adopt the that kind of finding.
Would that be subject for an emotion or make a motion that we consider this a matter for educational purposes only and fitting with the amendment, the Dover Amendment?
That's an appropriate motion.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Mr. Tom, second, is there any discussion on the motion? Oh, I need to designate the following five members to consider the motion and vote on it. Mr. Waugh, Mr. Mulligan, myself, Ms. Erikson, and Mr. Tom. Are the five. If there's no discussion on
I have one item of discussion. I would like to have a feeling for example, now you don't have a propane tank, but you do have to fill the vehicles, basically our trucks coming in periodically, and then the bus is filled right at the particular location now where you're going to be putting this new tank. Is that correct?
That is correct, the
What would be the number of tanks that are coming in now that would be reduced? So my thinking is that would be a far safer operation than having it, but to have a tank that you're talking about rather than having all these trucks come back and forth.
Well, there's going to be one 2,000 gallon tank on premise. Right now, they have a propane truck which comes in three times a week, Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, somewhere between 9:00 and 10:00 a.m. And it goes around and fills the 28 buses right now. So it's a they come in, it takes them about an hour or so to fill them all up and then they leave.
Good, thank you.
Certainly.
Very well, there's no further discussion and I'll call for a vote, Mr. Waugh.
I would vote yes.
Mr. Mulligan?
Yes.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Myself, yes, and Mr. Tom.
Yes.
Mr. Cole and Ms. Van Gisem, we will record your vote at present. Thank you. I will write the opinion with sufficient findings based on the application to satisfy the substance and specific requirements in General Laws, 48, Section 3. Thank you, Mr. Anders and Mr. Hilton.
Thank you, sir. Thank you all.
All right. I'm looking for Mr. Diaz, who let the record reflect that in the before the meeting was called to order, I had a conversation with Mr. Diaz on the telephone concerning his difficulty in following the link, I think he was using the link in the agenda. And I don't see that he's present. Is his being passed?
I think he just
Mr. D, let the record reflect that Mr. Diaz is now present. Is that correct, Mr. Diaz?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, I got I got a feedback situation here, which I'm going to take care of momentarily. Can you hear me without the feedback now?
Yes, yes, we can.
Okay.
Now, it was at your behest, was this case number 2128? It was at your behest that this case was continued from August 19th, 2020. What was before the board then and what is before the board now is the request of the applicant to withdraw its application without prejudice. You are allowed to proceed, Mr. Diaz.
So I know we have a new technology that we're using, a webinar system, I'm not familiar with that with Zoom. So I apologize for that. Now, at the last hearing, by the way, technically, I don't think I requested the continuance as a matter of fact, but the meeting, but I certainly didn't have any objection to it, that's that's a fair statement.
I'm thinking why what I meant to say, Mr. Diaz, was specifically, is a fair way of putting it if you want to produce evidence on the question.
Yes, that's right. Can I can I ask you a question? I just want to point out before we start here that the agenda, and it's been the case for the last three days, and still is the case now, the agenda has inaccurate information regarding this Zoom meeting. It has a meeting ID number which is in error. And it's different, it differs from the meeting ID number on the link shown in the webpage. I called you feverishly because I and a number of other people were having difficulty getting in to the to the Zoom meeting. And so I'm going to ask you a question and maybe if I don't know if you have town council there still, but I'm wondering if this problem is a is an issue. Let me say this way, I'm wondering if this issue is a problem insofar as our open meeting law is concerned. If we have if we have, I mean, after all, the public is supposed to be able to participate in this. And other people may have had difficulties and given up, quite frankly. I was lucky to find your cell phone number, I'm sorry I had to to, you know, intervene in what you were doing at the time, but you told me that the that a different ID number or an ID number was elsewhere on the website and that got me searching and I eventually found it. And I called up other parties to let them know how to get into this. So I want to just send that out there, just, you know, before we all spend a lot of time on all these hearings tonight, quite frankly. Do we have an issue insofar as the open law? You know, the open meeting, I'm not sure what to call it, the open meeting law is concerned with respect to this?
I make a ruling that there isn't any, there's no problem with the open meeting law.
I don't have a I don't have a point of view, I just raised the issue for your for your consideration.
No.
Okay. So you recall that we that I talked about the presentation and you have the presentation, the presentation's been available for two weeks and two days now, I guess. I would like to expeditiously go through that presentation, may I do so?
Yes, you may.
Okay, so how do I do that on this new webinar system? Maybe Sarah is available if she can help out.
Yeah, hold on, Larry, I just got to move you in as a panelist. And you can present.
Okay, somehow I got muted again, but that's okay, maybe just defaults to that.
Yeah, just defaults to that when you're moved in as a panelist.
Okay, so I'm now going to go into share screen, okay? Let me try to enlarge this, I apologize that the print is rather small. But again, I'm not going to necessarily read everything, I'm going to try to be expeditious here. I know you have a lot on your plate tonight. So I think you all know me, but just to be formal about this. I'm my name is Lance Diaz, resident of Orleans. I object, request of the applicant to withdraw its application, would the applicant request a withdrawal of its application with prejudice? As you know, under Massachusetts law, an applicant may freely withdraw its application without prejudice only prior to the publication of notice of the hearing regarding such application, otherwise approval of the zoning board of appeals is required to grant such withdrawal without prejudice. In this case, the public notice has been published in a hearing, the hearings have already commenced, having been continued ultimately to this date. Substantial testimony and evidence has already been provided in this case and I and others have prepared to provide further substantial and material testimony and evidence. And I would note that no assertion of a procedural or technical issue has been asserted by the applicant in support of its request for withdrawal without prejudice. In fact, to the best of my knowledge, the applicant hasn't presented any arguments as to why you should why you should grant the withdrawal without prejudice. It's it's my impression that the applicant has decided to withdraw midstream for no substantial unjust reason, but rather because it feels that it could be in a strategic interest if such withdrawal can be arranged without prejudice. I assert in this regard that the applicant's failure to obtain the approval of the Old Kings Highway Regional Historic District of the Old Kings Highway Regional Historic District Committee is insufficient reasons to abandon this independent proceeding of this board. And that granting the applications, the applicant's request would neither serve the interests and purposes of this board in this town, nor treat in a just manner those who have prepared assiduously to testify in reliance upon the assumption that all parties to these proceedings can conduct themselves in good faith. Okay, I'm going to talk about the zoning use regulations regarding 17 Nell's Way. As you know, it's located in New Orleans General Business District. And as such, both wholesaling and warehouse uses are expressly prohibited in this district, though uses are only allowed in industrial district. And furthermore, there aren't even any circumstances stipulated in which a special permit may be granted for wholesaling or warehouse storage in a general business district. The Orleans zoning bylaws, Section 164-10C, states that where an activity may be classified under more than one use, the more specific classification shall determine permissibility, but if equally specific, the more restrictive shall apply. In this case, it's abundantly clear, as will be shown by evidence to follow, that the web commercial activity is primarily and overwhelmingly wholesale, supported by a very substantial warehouse and storage activity. To the extent that any act, any retail activity existed is both secondary and relatively insignificant. Therefore, even if our zoning regulations did not include 164-10C, the web activities would be prohibited, uses for 17 Nell's Way. To conclude, to conclude otherwise, that retail, it would be equivalent to saying that retail should be wagging the wholesale dog. Of course, 164-10C quashes any possible notion that the FW web activities constitute allowed uses under our zoning use regulations, because both wholesaling and warehouse storage uses are more restrictive than a retail use. I'm only going to go through half this page here, not the memo items. They're there to read if you'd like. I've done a fair amount of legal research with respect to the laws and case history. Massachusetts General Law 93 is, which pertains to the regulation of trade in certain enterprises. Section 14E definitions specifically states as, as, as shown below, the terms sell at retail, sales at retail, and retail sales shall mean and include any transfer of title to tangible personal property for valuable consideration. And goes on, for consumption or use other than resale or further processing of manufacturing. At the key term here, I think, is transfer of title. We're talking about transfer of legal title. And the reason why I'm emphasizing that is because at the March 4th Zoning Board of Appeals meeting, there was a theory postulated along the lines of physical transfer is, is definitive in that, in this case, with respect to defining something as a retail or wholesale sale. That if the goods are transported by some means, by any means, from, from web to, to the house or the project in which the work is being, the work is being done, and the goods will, and the goods will be installed, that that therefore constitutes a, a retail sale by web. That's not true under our law. And not only is it not true under the portion of our law that deals with trade and regulation of trade, but it's also not true under our tax, under our tax, under the tax code either. And that's what I show below. Let me turn to evidence supporting the assertion that FW web is primarily a wholesaler. Here's a screenshot from their website. It's the About Us page. It refers to their customers as residential and commercial contractors and industrial professionals. It refers to one-track contractors to the facility manager of a large complex as their customers. It goes on below to refer to themselves as, and they do this in many, in many instances, as the largest wholesale distributor of its kind in the Northeast. Again, that's a screenshot from the FW web website. Here, on the next page, is the filing with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Secretary. They define themselves, their filings refer to themselves as wholesale, as they describe their business as wholesale distribution. That's what the arrow points to. The next page shows the NAICS profile page. NAICS is the system that replaced the SIC system. The SIC was in a standard industrial code system. This is used by the U.S. government for, for all sorts of data collection, all sorts of economic data collection. As you see here, FW web is classified both primarily and secondarily as a wholesaler. That's what that arrow points to. Let me talk about substantial warehousing and storage uses associated with this proposal. As you know, both the wareha, the wholesaling activity as well as the warehousing and storage activity, two different activities related to one another, one supports the other for sure. But two different, in terms of our zoning use regulations, they are two different uses. And both are prohibited in a general business zone, but allowed in an industrial zone. Okay. Now, I state that the, the amount of warehousing and storage space for this facility, this planned facility, is tremendous, both in absolute and relative terms. Total indoor planned storage productive floor space, including storage showroom and retail space, but excluding office space is approximately 35,000 square feet, of which 20,000 or about 58% would be for storage. However, this also includes about 11,000 square feet of storage space that's dedicated to high rack, nearly 30-foot-high storage. Reflecting this, the amount of indoor space set aside for storage is approximately 435,000 cubic feet. Now, maybe that doesn't mean too much, but this does. It represents about 67% of the usable productive space of the proposed massive building. In addition to the indoor space devoted to the stores described just now, the planned facility will also include approximately 37, 500 square feet of outdoor storage. The total area devoted to storage for the proposed FW web facility would be nearly 60,000 square feet. All I've done is added up the numbers that I've just presented to you. That's about 1.4 acres, a massive amount, no matter how you look at it. And that's consistent with the fact that FW web is indeed primarily a wholesaler. It's also consistent with the fact that the FW web proposed facility includes a truck loading and unloading zone, which includes three 17-foot-high, four-foot-below-grade loading docks designed to accommodate tractor trailers and other large trucks. Here's an example of FW web high rack storage in another facility, Waterford, Connecticut. The photo is, is from the newspaper cited below the photograph, and the, the height data is from Supply House Times. So this is very similar to, if you look at the plans for FWF, what they intend on putting in, or what they would intend on putting in, in, in the Orleans location. And here's an example of the outs, outdoor storage at the web facility in Hyannis, which incidentally is located in an industrial park. Now, just, just so you know, there's been some talk about the size of the buildings, that the building plan for Orleans would be smaller than the one in Hyannis. That's true. But the outdoor, the outdoor storage facility is twice as large and planned for Orleans as opposed to the facility in the industrial park in Hyannis. Let me summarize with respect to the matter of use. As shown by the evidence presented, FW web's principal commercial activity is wholesaling. The law says so. Common sense says so. And FW web says so in its filings and its, and on its website. I believe that the evidence is overwhelming and unassailable. Additionally, and consistent with this warehousing, with this wholesaling activity, web, the web activity includes substantial warehousing and storage use, as demonstrated by the evidence I just showed you. It's clear, therefore, that both of web's principal activities are prohibited at the 17 Nell's website. And the only, and, and I end here, and this is more of a theoretical point. The only way that, that FW web could really be allowed to go ahead with its proposed industrial facility for 17 Nell's Way is if the, if your board granted a use variance. I'm going to try to go through this quickly. I, I present this as a theoretical possibility, but as a practical matter, given the facts and circumstances, it's really not possible. As you, as you, as you well know, under Massachusetts law, use variance is a very difficult form of relief to obtain. The standards are rigorous and the bar is set high. Should a variance be granted in a less than rigorous manner, those with legal standing suffering a grievance, and that can be shown, the courts will reverse and remand back to your board. The creation of districts, zoning districts in this town, in which only certain specified uses are allowed, is fundamental to the matter of zoning, of achieving the town's long-range planning goals, and of protecting the property rights and other rights of our residents. The judge in a recent Massachusetts case, Styler versus Linfield Board of Appeals, involving the matter of use noted that, quote, "Zoning was created and is justified by the degree of certainty it provides to various designated districts." When that certainty no longer exists, the protections of zoning no longer exist. In order for your board to properly and justifiably grant a variance, four conditions must all be met under MGL Chapter 48, Section 10. It just so happens that the Supreme Judicial Court of Massachusetts, in the case of Warren versus the Zoning Board of Appeals of Amherst, has parsed the words of this statute as follows to highlight the four conjunctive requirements. MGL 48, Section 10 authorizes a Board of Appeals to grant a variance with respect to particular land where it specifically finds, and this is the quote, specifically finds that, A, owing to circumstances related to the soil conditions, shape, or topography of such land, and especially affecting such land, but not affecting generally the zoning district and the district in which it's located; B, a literal, a literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance or bylaw would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, to the petitioner or applicant; C, that desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good; and D, without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purposes of such ordinance or bylaw. Four conditions, all of which represent high hurdles. And in this case, none of the four required conditions would be met. There are no circumstances, especially or uniquely affecting the 17 Nell's Way property, different from the rest of the general business district, that would reasonably justify its use for the proposed industrial facility. Also, FW, FW web does not own the land, and should have purchased the land intending its use for industrial purposes, such acts would commit, would constitute a self-imposed hardship. Further, no evidence has been presented to suggest that FW web would be able to construct its planned facilities elsewhere in this area of the Cape or otherwise, and thus suffer a hardship. In fact, their COO has publicly stated that they're going to look around for other locations and perhaps another location in Orleans. So that's prima facie evidence that they cannot claim a hardship because there's no other place to go. They don't know that. Granting a, granting of a use variance for the proposed industrial facility at 17 Nell's Way is likely to substantially and unfavorably affect the public good because of factors including the abudding's residential zone, noise associated with loading and unloading of trucks, and the movement of large industrial items, tractor trails, and other large truck traffic, existing traffic patterns, the nature and characteristics of Nell's Way, the only means of in and out from 17 Nell's Way, and the inherent difficulties of maneuvering large trucks from Route 6A to Nell's Way, given the roadway infrastructure. Finally, number four, granting of a use variance would substantially derogate from the intent and purpose of our zoning laws, zoning bylaws, as a proposed nature, character, and scale of proposed industrial facility uses substantially and materially different from those uses allowed in a general business district. The overall conclusion that I reach is that the evidence is compelling and unassailable, and supports only two possible decisions to be made by your board. Either allow FW web to withdraw its applications with prejudice, or deny the FW web applications. Now, I've done a little bit more legal research over the last few days, and I have a one-page addendum. So just bear with me through one more page, if you will. In the courts, as memorialized in federal case law, and I can cite the case if anyone's interested, in considering a motion for voluntary dismissal, the courts, quote, "Must focus primarily on protecting the interests of the defendant." In the web case, the analogous parties to the defendants are those opposing web's request for withdrawal without prejudice. Included in the definition of interests, interests to be protected by your board are substantial efforts that many of us, including the abutters, have expended on this case. Now, let's take a quick look at the efforts expended by FW web and its agents in order to obtain relief from our zoning regulations. I think that this should also be taken into consideration by your board. The evidence which I have presented shows conclusively that FW web is a wholesaler, and that FW web represents itself as a wholesaler on both its websites and in its corporate filings. However, rather than come to us in an upfront and good-faith manner, by acknowledging the true nature of their commercial activity, web and its agents have instead sought to mischaracterize the FW web business activity by attempting to define web as a retailer, and actually suggesting that the proposed massive amount of storage and warehousing capacity is consistent with that of a retailer. Quite frankly, I think it could be reasonably argued in this case that not only is withdrawal with prejudice the only appropriate basis upon which to approve a withdrawal, it would also seem entirely appropriate to me for your board to admonish those who've had a role in mischaracterizing the true nature of the web commercial activities in these proceedings and elsewhere in regard to these proceedings. Now, with respect to the matter of how your board has decided in other cases, I would argue that this case is significantly different than other cases in which your board has allowed a withdrawal without prejudice. I say this in light of the following. One, the very substantial and important work undertaken by the abutters and other parties who oppose the web proposal to bring to light, to bring to your board, the unvarnished and comprehensive facts, and to research and present applicable law in response to web's proposal. These substantial efforts by the opposing parties are in marked contrast to, and have been necessitated by the efforts made by those promoting the web project to both mischaracterize and invent legally untenable theories that if relied upon would have the effect of circumventing our zoning regulations. And finally, the true facts and applicable laws conclusively demonstrate that the FW web's commercial activities are unambiguously prohibited at 17 Nell's Way. Could any, could any case be clearer on the merits than this one? Your board has the discretion to require that any withdrawal be affected with prejudice. I urge you, in the interest of the abutters and other parties opposing the web proposal, in the interest of the town and its residents, and consistent with charter and purpose of your board, to require any withdrawal to be made with prejudice. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Diaz. Does any member of the board wish to request clarification from Mr. Diaz on his presentation?
I would ask a question, Mr. Marneck, that is not necessarily directed at Mr. Diaz, per se, but at my need to understand the, I don't know, the posture of the case. When the web proposal was initially before us, I take it we granted the special permit?
No, no, we started, no, we started to take evidence back in March.
To take evidence, and then the hearing, then the moving party?
Well, there was a continuance, there was a continuance at the request of the applicant.
Okay.
Among the reasons were that there were parallel hearings or permissions needed. One of which, the principal one of which, was the Old Kings Highway Commission, which only recently, in the past six weeks or so, resumed their hearing and denied the relief sought by the applicant. But no, we never approved, there was nothing coming out of the zoning board.
Thank you. And then the second point I would like to clarify is we, as a board, are under the understanding that the difference between with prejudice and without prejudice is that with prejudice, the applicant cannot renew within two years unless they make a special application, whereas without prejudice, they can renew at any time. Is that correct?
That is correct.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Are there any other questions from any board member of Mr. Diaz, based on his presentation? Based on his presentation? I ask whether there is any other person wishing to discuss the, an opposition to the request for a withdrawal of the application without prejudice?
Mr. Chairman?
Oh, Mr. Zender. I thought maybe Dr. Padione's one.
I'd be more than happy to yield to Mr. Zender if he wants to speak.
Thank you, Doctor.
No, that's fine, Mr. Chairman. I think I'd rather have all of the objections out of the way first before I present to the board.
Very well. And Doctor, did you want to add?
Yes, thank you.
Or supplement or complement Mr. Diaz?
Yeah, let me first of all introduce myself to the board, which I didn't have a chance to do last time. I'm M. John Batinas, who has had an orthonic practice in Orleans since early nineteen eighty. Cape Cod Brace's orthonic practice has been at the Six Nell Way location since two thousand and five, and as such, I am very familiar with the area in question. I am the trustee of the Dolly Realty Trust, who purchased and later invested considerably in the hundreds of thousands of dollars in completing, completely rebuilding a wooden colonial structure to house my orthonic practice at Six Nell's Way that is located within three hundred feet of the Underground Mall. Accordingly, the law, I represent the trust, which is a legal abutter with presumptive standing. I will not go over all the same material that you've already heard concerning the fact that FW Web is undoubtedly a wholesaler and a tremendous storage and warehousing activity. But I will tell you that I am thoroughly familiar with the material that Mr. Diaz presented, and I know it to be true and accurate in every material way. And I agree that either Webb should be allowed to withdraw with prejudice or their application should be denied. I'd like to talk a moment about the intent behind our zoning regulations, which really prohibit wholesaling and warehouse storage activities in our zoning district with only the exception of an industrial zone. We know conclusively that Webb's usage violates the letter of the law. I think it's just as clear that the Webb facility violates the intent and the spirit of our laws. In other words, I believe that the proposed Webb facility has an industrial character, nature and appearance. You might say form definitely follows function in this case. I would ask to be able to screen share so that the board and Zoom participants were able to visualize points that I'd like to present.
Yes, you may.
Thank you. I don't know if Sarah is allowing.
Ms. Eaton?
Yeah, he's coming in now.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, I'm going to press share my screen. Hopefully, I'll be able to show you what I have here. Can you see my screen here?
I can.
Okay. What I'd like to take a look at is this proposed FW building. And really, what we have done is we have basically created a three-dimensional image model, and we took the information from the FW Web plans. And when we look at this, by looking at this again, form definitely follows function in this case. It includes a massive two-hundred-one-foot-wide-by-one-forty-six-foot-deep box-like slab-sided building with a footprint of over two-thirty acre and with a thirty-foot-high, mostly flat roof to accommodate an equally tall rack storage system that Mr. Diaz has spoken about. Included at the front of the building, facing the abutters, is a truck-loading dock area some fifty-seven feet wide, seventy feet long, and four feet deep at the building to accommodate tractor trailers and other large trucks as its three loading docks. An outdoor storage area, almost one acre in size, is included for such items as large propane tanks, all kinds of PVC piping, et cetera. Asphalt or concrete paved areas for other areas' use, including a parking lot, comprise another three-quarters of an acre. The town's planning director noted, in contrast to what would normally be required, that Webb, quote, "did not put trees in the parking lot because they have a lot of trucks that turn around and back up into their loading area," unquote. And this would be, this is, again, the model, and it shows what the building would look like with the three loading docks. And please note on the far right a large area that's also for moving materials around in the outside storage area. And that's basically visible from the Affordable Housing District. The other thing that we did is that we took this model now, and we then provided reasonable approximation of the positioning of the proposed building on the site, again, with the data that was provided to the various boards by Webb. And this is really what this building would look like, looking from six A. And you can see the massive size that's involved here. And I'm not interested, I know that you're not interested in architecture, I'm more interested also, as well as the function of why this building looks so massive. And if we look, for example, from the Affordable Housing District, you can see then these three large loading truck docks, along with that large garage door, which is visible, and this view is visible from the Affordable Housing District. So I think it's clear that not only the proposed Webb facility be prohibited under the law, the letter of our zoning regulations, it would also most assuredly violate the intent and the spirit of those laws. I'd like to now talk about how the attributes of the proposed Webb facility would affect the immediate area. It is not meant as a definitive listing, but rather to show you that even on at least a representative basis, the impacts would be both many and substantial. Let's look at truck traffic issues. Webb's annual revenues are approximately over a billion dollars and are generated by eighty to a hundred facilities, which suggests daily, average daily revenues per facility is between forty and fifty thousand. Daily revenue between forty and fifty thousand. You have three large loading docks, open asphalt area for large truck maneuvering. All this points to the fact that we can expect considerable truck and large truck traffic due to the Webb facility. Let's look at the roadway infrastructure issue. Impact of truck traffic would be negatively aggravated by permanent and unalterable roadway infrastructure issues. There is only one way of entering and exiting Seventeen Nell's Way property, and that is through Nell's Way Private Way. Although the property is adjacent to Route six A, construction of a direct entrance and exit to and from Seventeen Nell's Way and Route six A is absolutely prohibited due to the proximity of Route six A entrance and exit ramps. The intersection of Nell's Way with Baker's Pond Road and the intersection of Baker's Pond Road with Route six A is very close. Not much more than the length of a tractor-trailer truck. There is also a meaningful change in the road elevation as one travels from six A onto Baker's Pond Road and into Nell's Way. Over this hundred-and-fifty-foot horizontal distance, the road elevation increases by seven and a half feet, with three feet of this increase occurring over the last twenty-five feet onto Nell's Way. That is a very steep twelve percent grade. All of this increase in truck traffic is to compete with existing traffic on this narrow twenty-six-foot-wide residential road. There are times during the day that traffic comes to a standstill in Nell's Way from existing businesses, including the medical lab, orthodontic practices and the car wash. Orthodontic practices are generally high-volume patient practices. It is not unusual to have these practices see forty to seventy patients per day. Most patients are adolescent patients driven by a parent, which probably has siblings, other siblings in the car. The same can be said in general for medical labs, but catering to an older population. Addition, it is not unusual to have seven or eight cars waiting on Nell's Way to get in the car wash. This substantial increase in truck, in large truck traffic would significantly worsen traffic and safety issues associated with a car wash on Nell's Way. And I'd like to show you a picture, basically, of what I'm talking about. The building on the right here is the Napa Auto Parts property, which is right directly bordering Baker's Pond Road and the entrance to Nell's Way. There's seven cars waiting here, okay? And the point that I want to make here, one of the property's owners are basically putting this sign out here, please do not block entrance. And that's because this is something that recurs again and again. This is not something that's, you know, occurs occasionally. It occurs a lot. Now, right now, when the cars entering the car wash get backed up, they're able to back up on the side of the road to allow other light traffic, vehicle traffic on Nell's Way to pass by. This situation will become significantly worse with wider and larger vehicles, such as medium and heavy-duty trucks, going and coming on Nell's Way because the narrow roadway would not allow safe passage until traffic cleared. This Nell's Way backup will spill out to Baker's Pond Road and six A. And this would be also true even if the roadway was widened. The other issue to look at is noise. The trucks themselves, you know, they don't have any restrictions on the noise they make. The maneuvering of large trucks, the moving of stuff in the outdoor storage area with forklifts, et cetera. And all this is really an eyesore. And if we take a look, for example, at the outside storage area in FW Web Industrial Park in Hyannis, these are some of the items that you were going to see in that storage area, which are very, very clearly visible by the budding residents that live on top of the hill in a residential zone. So I think that the grievances that I and other abutters would suffer would be many and material. In this regard, when I invested hundreds of thousands of dollars to build a medical facility at Six Nell's Way, I did so under the reasonable reliance that the town and its boards would enforce the zoning regulations, especially the use regulations. Not only would the installation of the proposed industrial facility result that impacts I just spoke about, I think that it's obvious that allowing the installation of an industrial facility a mere few hundred feet from my property would materially negatively affect the practice value and the property value. For example, mothers driving their kids to orthotic office most assuredly do not want to contend with truck traffic or narrow roadways with multiple intersections in close proximity to one another. Placement of medical and dental facilities generally are in easy, accessible, non-congested, congested, truck-heavy traffic areas. Patients find these areas intimidating, tend to avoid them and look for more convenient, safer locations. In closing, I and others have expended considerable efforts to bring you the truth. We have taken measurements, photos, a model was built, engaged photographic professional, researched the law, et cetera. I think that under these circumstances and based upon the overwhelming evidence that has been presented, that either your board should deny the Webb application or allow Webb to withdraw its application only with prejudice. I think that these options are the only two appropriate ones and just options available for your consideration. And to be frank, I think that the duty of your board should not be more about protecting the interest of those, excuse me, I think that the duty of your board should be more about protecting the interest of those who have invested and built in accordance with and reliance upon our zoning regulations than it is to try to accommodate those who would propose violating our zoning regulations. And in closing, I don't know, for example, if Mrs. Soares is available tonight, but she asked me if she wasn't because of a medical emergency. She was not, she may not be able to speak for herself, but she wanted to convey the fact that she is an abutter is definitely against this whole project. She does not want to be subjected to look at this industrial site and be subjected to the noise from the truck traffic and the movement of heavy objects in the open open storage area. And she definitely would request that I speak to you about her feelings and that she also wants to make sure that the board would consider withdrawing only with prejudice or outright dismissing or denying this case. In closing, I thank the board for their time and attention to the above issues, and I yield back my screen. Thank you.
Does any member of the board wish to ask any questions of the doctor during his presentation?
They still awake?
Mr. Noel, do you wish to speak? Then, Mr. Zender, you have a remark?
I do, Mr. Chairman. Can you hear me okay?
I can.
Okay. First of all, what's in front of the board right now is not whether or not to approve or grant the relief, although, and many of the remarks that the board has heard were really designed to address the merits of the application itself. In fact, Mr. Diaz spent a considerable amount of time addressing the standards for the grant of a variance, when in fact, there has been no variance applied for or requested from this board. So I think without addressing the substance of the gentleman's remarks, and I'll let them fall where they fall, what I have requested this board is nothing more, nothing less than a withdrawal of the application without prejudice. The previous two speakers spent a significant amount of time talking about why this project is not appropriate in this location. I would hope and think that a withdrawal of the application probably would be in their best interest. If this board doesn't want a granted withdrawal without prejudice, you know, my client's gone. You know, the landlord is not represented in this forum right now. If this board wants to move ahead and take an action such as a denial that may impact the rights of the landowner, who is unrepresented in this matter, go right ahead. If you want to spend the next hour making findings and issuing a decision and filing a decision and subject it to appeal by the landlord if he feels that his interests have been compromised, I'm not here to defend that. I'm here only to say that my client has elected not to move forward with this project based on the denial of Old Kings Highway. They're not interested in this site anymore. That a withdrawal without prejudice, I think, is in the best interest of the town. I think it's in the best interest of the applicant. I think it's in the best interest of the abutters. And I think it's certainly in the best interest of the landlord, because I don't know where this property is going from here. And in any sort of a determination that affects or impacts the legal status of that property going forward to the landlord who is unrepresented, I think is probably a disservice to both the taxpayer and to this board and the town. So whatever this board wants to do is fine. We have not requested a withdrawal with prejudice. I don't think that's in front of this board. I don't think this board is authorized to grant that relief. So if the board wants to hear our motion and grant a withdrawal without prejudice, I don't think it will impose any negative effect on the town, because any future use of this property would require zoning relief of this board if it's a use that's not allowed as a right, and if it requires an increase in commercial space of more than twenty to a hundred square feet, which I would imagine it would. So I think whatever is proposed for this project will come before this board, will come before Old Kings Highway, will come before the site plan interview process, and I think it will be fully vetted by the town. I think that these requests by the abutters, nothing more than, you know, stomping on the graves of somebody they've recently murdered. And, you know, for however they want to do, reason they want to do that, you know, I can count on one hand, actually, I can count on one finger, I think, in the last thirty years, the times that a motion or a request withdrawal without prejudice wasn't granted, and it had substantive reasons for that. So I'm hoping the board will just grant the request, move on to your next agenda item, and let this particular chapter of Orleans history, you know, close itself and go on. Thank you.
Mr. Marneck, may I respond very briefly to that?
Yes, you may, Mr. Diaz, please.
I think what's in front of the board is a request for withdrawal. Plain and simple. Just like when a plaintiff makes a request for dismissal. It's up to the board to decide whether or not to grant that request and what terms and conditions to put on that request with respect to any approval. And clearly, one of the conditions they can put on it is with prejudice. So you've made the request to withdraw. Your clients made the request to withdraw. The board can grant that request, and they can put conditions on that approval. And one of the conditions, just to be
And one of the conditions, just to be clear, is with prejudice. And in this particular case, unlike civil law in the courts, that approval with prejudice carries with it a two-year moratorium in terms of bringing the case back to before, the same case back to the zoning board of appeals. It's nothing draconian. In the courts, you'd be forever precluded from bringing back the same case. So what, what, what the abutters and those who are opposed to this are asking for is not draconian by any, by any stretch of the imagination. Your client initiated this action. Your client pursued this, this initiative in a less, in a less, excuse me, excuse me, in a less than in a less than good faith manner. Okay, so that's, that's, that's the truth and that should be factored into the board's decision. Thank you very much.
Mr. Zender, please.
I think Mr. Diaz's remarks, I don't think he was addressing you as your client having brought this action. I would ask that his comments go through the chair at a minimum. His presentation reminded me of the final scene in Animal House when, when John Belushi got rolling and with, was it over when the Germans bombed Pearl Harbor? I understand and I appreciate his interest in the case, but I have to take issue with the statement that this board has the authority unilaterally to dismiss a case with prejudice. This court, this board has the, has the ability to either dismiss without prejudice at the result, at the request of the applicant or can consider the matter and take, take an action on the merits if it doesn't grant that request. But if this board were to move unilaterally to dismiss it with prejudice, then I as counsel probably would see fit to take an appeal of that decision on legal grounds because I think that puts this board and my future cases in a tenuous position when we make requests with our applications in certain circumstances.
Mr. Chairman.
I don't know that I agree with that. I'm particularly concerned that there was some discussion in your presentation, Mr. Diaz, that the applicant mischaracterized the facts or its operations and you were ascribing some kind of a nefarious or improper motive to FW Web. At least speaking to myself, I found nothing of that. I disagree with you, Mr. Zender. I think that we should allow the withdrawal of the order the withdrawal of the application with prejudice. You know, the two-year moratorium, I think it implies, I don't think that would affect the land whatsoever. We're all concerned about the highest destinies of the underground law. No question. The last thing this board wants to see on behalf of the town is to freeze that property from further consideration during the next 24 months. I think as a practical matter, that FW Web is done at least for what it proposed through you and as the doctor paraded in great diligence, showing the operation the way he perceived it and others perceived it to be and how that would have been nimble to the use, to the, to the past. But there was, I thought that the FW Web application was legitimate and businesslike from the very, very beginning. What we would have done with that, and I, I am personally glad that we allowed this hearing tonight and for Mr. Diaz and the doctor to demonstrate the diligent development of what we probably would have heard before.
Mr. Chairman.
Any other comment by?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Can I be recognized?
Yes, Doctor.
You know, I, I think that with all due respect to Mr. Zender, you know, these are idle threats that we hear from him and he's done this to other boards as well to try and intimidate board members. Considering the amount of time that the abutters and all these other people in gathering all this information, I think it's, it really is basically stating, we don't want to come back here again and again and waste a lot of time. We have spent hours upon hours and not just digging the information out, but also attending these board meetings. And it's to the point where it's not really much of a hardship to say and to ask after all this process to FW Web has to wait two years if they want to come back in this site. I think that's very reasonable because if you don't grant this without, with prejudice, they can come back tomorrow. This, this, this fiasco is going to continue. There's no guarantee that this would not continue. You don't care.
Do you think for a second, Doctor, that, you know, that members of this board would forget the, the history of FW Web's proposal if that did happen?
I think what I'm trying to say, Mr. Chairman, I'm not questioning your capability of looking at the facts, but I want you to also think about all the resources of this town that had been involved with this entire process from the very beginning. And to have to go through all these resources of the town again is really a waste of town resources. And it also puts a tremendous burden back on the abutters to have to go through this again and again.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Zender and then Mr. Mulligan.
I'd like, I'd like to pose a hypothetical for the board if I might. Let's say the board orders a withdrawal of this matter with prejudice. And there is a two-year operative period that a project cannot come before this board unless both the planning board and the zoning board make an affirmative determination that the circumstances under which the permit was denied is affirmatively different. So let's say an applicant comes forward, a separate applicant a year from now that wants to put a retail use on this site. And this was an application for a retail use. And let's say these particular abutters who don't like that. Let's say they decide that they really don't want to see a Gap store or whatever's coming in. The first thing they're going to do is they're going to argue to this board and to the planning board and to the building inspector in connection with the issues of the building permit, that this, that project is not substantially different and requires separate hearings by both the zoning board and the planning board in order to move forward to be heard for a special permit by this board. It creates a procedural mechanism under which these abutters can come forward and assert that whatever that application is, is not substantially different or the circumstances under which it was denied have not changed and that they can, they can use that as a way of delaying and obfuscating and, and creating another procedural hurdle that a separate applicant has to go through. Withdrawal without prejudice cleans the slate and lets the next applicant come in and, and have their matter heard on the merits.
Oh, wow. Then what you're talking, Mr. Zender, is the famous stopple that the opponents are describing. You want to have a stopple against the, against them too. The way we do business here, you know, every case is, is separate and we are open to it. Mr. Mulligan?
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I'd like to make a comment and to just, to the, to the opponents, I would say that the quality of the opposition exceeds almost any presentation I've seen at this, my tenure in this, on this board, either for an application or against an application. Having said that, however, and I, I used the word probably injudiciously the last time and I thought, found Mr. Diaz's presentation to be compelling. That was probably injudicious of me at that time, but at any rate, Mr. Zender raises the point that, that to me, finally, with prejudice implies is a deposit, a dispositive ruling, that we have come to a ruling on this. And in fact, we have had the opposition and we've had no rebuttal because Mr. Zender wants to withdraw it. So I don't know that we have, I hate to use the word, but practice law is standing really. We're in a position to, to say with prejudice because we haven't had a definitive hearing. We've had a partial hearing. We haven't had any, any response to some very forceful opposition because Mr. Zender intends to withdraw or asks to withdraw it. So that, so that the matter is still pending. I don't know how, and yet to, to, to grant it with prejudice is dispositive. That's, maybe I'm misreading everything, but the application, we haven't had a full hearing with all the testimony and rebuttal given.
May I respond, Mr. Chair?
No, I don't think so, Mr. Diaz. No, I'm mainly concerned with, with hearing comments from our board.
Maybe I can talk later on.
I don't know. I think we, we have a lot of full development from tonight. As I mentioned, and so Mr. Mulligan was quite impressive. Any other member of the board wish to sound off here?
I guess.
I, I tend to agree with, with Mr. Morgan in certainly what his words were. And I also think that part of the issue is, you know, there are a lot of questions that we asked at the first meeting, which have been postponed later. And then by the time we got into preparing that, we got delayed from the Historic Society. And as I understand, that particular proposal was deemed inadequate or not acceptable. And I think that all will have to be resolved prior to anything coming back to us. And I would certainly like to be prepared when, when a re, if there comes to be a new hearing, that those issues that happened at the Historic Society have to be resolved because it wouldn't, again, if we want to be concerned about wasting people's time, I don't think we would want to go through approving or disapproving the application then be faced again with the fact that it is not considered to be warranted by the Historic Society. So our approval would mean nothing. I think it clearly makes sense to me to withdraw without prejudice. Let the opponents make their case in total and then we can decide that. I think they're going to, this is not going to be done tomorrow. It's going to be done in a long period of time. So I think that's my take on it. I would be happy to approve the withdrawal without prejudice.
Mr. Todd.
I don't want to extend the discussion unnecessarily because I agree with George. But it's as if the moving party is asking for a directed verdict when the opening hasn't even been completed and they are presenting evidence. It just seems to me, I, I don't challenge their right to do so, but under the circumstances here, I really don't see any reason to impose the extraordinary remedy of with prejudice.
Any other member of the board wish to make any remarks? I'm designating the following members to vote on. We will need a motion to allow the applicant's motion to withdraw the application.
Mr. Chair, before you do that, let me just make one last comment if you don't mind.
Yes, you may.
Thank you very much. Look, I, I understand a little bit of what's being said here, but in point of fact, you have the discretion to find with prejudice, to allow this with prejudice, even if no hearings had occurred. Under the law, as long as a notice has been, has been sent out, at that point, after that point, it's got to come to your committee. So this has nothing to do with how far the hearing has gone, quite frankly, except, except that a tremendous amount of effort's been placed because of this initiative by Webb. Now, let me just speak to this one other point about the mischaracterization. We may have different opinions on this. That's possibly true. But I think that when someone characterizes their business in a totally different way than what it really is and refers to the, 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 the storage facility as that consistent with a retailer, in my book, that's a misrepresentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Diaz. The following members will consider, first, is there a motion to approve the withdrawal of the application without prejudice?
Still moved.
A motion by Mr. Mulligan. Is there a second?
Second.
By Mr. Waugh. The following members will vote on, on this motion. Mr. Waugh, Mr. Mulligan, Nicole, Mr. Todd, and Mr. Zach Holt.
Mr. Chairman, may I, may I add one, one more remark to what I've already said?
Yes.
I don't wish to delay, but I, just to the opponents, you have, you have created an enormous hurdle for this project. Whether it comes in today, tomorrow, two years or 100 years, you have created an enormous hurdle. Your, your research is not lost and, and your presentations aren't lost. What, what we're looking at is what is appropriate for this board, given the, the status of the, of the hearing, basically. That's, that was my point.
I, I'd like to respond to that in, in good faith, Mr. Chair.
No, your request is declined.
Okay, well, that's fine, but thank you, Mr. Mulligan.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Diaz. Then I'll call, roll call vote. Mr. Waugh?
I vote yes to the motion.
Mr. Mulligan?
Yes.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Todd?
Yes.
Mr. Zach Holt?
No.
And the motion carries four votes. I vote present. And I will record a present vote for Ms. Van Gisa. And the motion carries four votes to one.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Members of the board, the final item of business is case number 2136. And that is the application of Scott Bean, Bean doing business as Atlantic Workshop, Inc. for an appeal from the zoning administrator, that is the building inspector, determining that the boat in the front yard of the property contained a sign or was a sign and requested the applicant to remove the boat or the sign of the property located at 94 Main Street, Orleans, Mass. Number 34, parcel number 28. Now, I inquire whether any other member of, any member of the board has had any communication with the applicant or any of the applicant's agents concerning the subject of this application? I, I know positive response. I also ask if any member of the board present has informed any judgment concerning the, this application. I therefore declare that the board and all its members are different and impartial. I'm asking the application, the applicant to present. Mr. Father Bianco?
Yes, hello. Hello, board, and thank you, Chairman Marnik. Thank you for hearing us this evening. We would like to be able to present our understanding and our application relative to the zoning determination of Mr. Evers on, on June 23rd, 2020. Specifically as we address, if I may, Chairman Marnik, continue?
Yes, please.
As we address in our letter of support and in our application, our appeal, the zoning determination issued by Commissioner Evers on June 23rd, 2020 is improper. We'll disregard the content of that for the moment here, but the, the actual application in and of itself, the determination, doesn't have the citation of any violation of what law or statute which was purported to have been violated in saying. The 40, Chapter 40A, Section 7, the zoning enforcement provides that Commissioner Evers needs to provide notice relative to a violation. That notice needs to be specific. I would address with the board the regulations that have been upheld and questioned by the superior courts here and the appeals courts here that state that the notice provided to a proposed violator relative to a building commissioner needs to provide notice that provides the specific offense charge and the time and date and place of the violation. So in that regard, I would refer to Maroni versus the Planning Board of Haverhill, 97 Mass. App. Court 678, it's a 2020 case, a recent case. But in that, it's determining and has the long-held standing of Massachusetts But in that, it's determining and has the long-held standing of Massachusetts courts that the building commissioner is required to provide what they are specifically alleging is the violation in sight to the, the actual code. He does not do so in the June 23rd, 2020 zoning determination. Wherefore, the, the purported violation, him stating that the boat is a sign and is illegal, is improper on its face and should be dismissed as we are asking for immediately, without any other consideration relative to the rest of our considerations that we put forward in our appeal.
Well, let me, let me have, just a second. Maybe that would put the end of it. You're saying then, since the, the building commissioner didn't cite Town Code, Chapter 164, Section 35, then the notice was no good?
Correct.
Alan?
Correct, Mr. Chairman.
All right.
The, the four.
Yeah, and you, you submitted a, 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 a letter to Mr. Evers dated July 20, 2020, which doesn't seem that, that you had any confusion then as to what the building commissioner was saying?
The, and I'll refer you to the same exact case that I just referred to, the Maroni versus Planning Board. And in that particular instance, it was relative to a, a, that building permit in issue and to, and a zoning enforcement relative to an experienced builder going forward without a building permit. And there, the court said, it doesn't matter what his knowledge is. It has absolutely no idea. It's strict compliance with the regulations and strict compliance with the notice requirements for, for that. And the local bylaws is ne, is necessary. The statutory procedures in question, quoting now, serve more than a salutary notice function. They're designed to provide not only appropriate notice, but an opportunity to be heard with administrative efficiency. It's not a choice. It's a, it's an affirmative duty that is required in those notices to provide what statute it is. It doesn't matter if I have an idea or can surmise what it is, or that we're knowledgeable because we have past history. It makes no difference. It is required in those notices to be provided, and they weren't. So on its face, it has to be, it has to be appropriately appealed and dismissed and have no efficacy whatsoever. So that, that's, that's point one. And if we want to continue on, we can continue on with the rest of our argument here. But that is the first singular point that, that we have in our, our papers and why the zoning determination is ineffective and has no validity. Second, I don't know if, Mr. Chairman, you wanted to ask a question there? You just, you look like you had a question.
I didn't.
Okay. If, if anyone else on the board has a question onto that issue, I'm certainly capable of addressing it.
Maybe I ought to allow, allow. Let, let me ask the board, Mr. Fernando Bianco. Does anyone want to talk about the question to Mr. about, to Mr. Fernando Bianco, whether the notice was completely on its face deficient and we ought to all go home tonight? Anybody have a question about that?
I do, Mr. Chairman. If this is not out of order. As a practical matter, if we were to accept the petitioner's argument, Mr. Evers is presumably gonna bring proper notice. And a month from now, we're gonna be here again. And under those circumstances, why create an opportunity for appeal? Just give it to him, and, and then we'll take the chips as fall where they may. Mr. Evers can take care of himself in this. I'm complete.
Certainly not gonna, well, we don't know what happened next.
Oh, you know that Everest guy. No, we don't know what's gonna happen.
No, we know, we don't know. So, so we do that. We don't know what the.
That is correct. That is correct. If we accept the argument, we don't.
To say that we're, we're basically determining that the letter was inactively drawn or insufficient.
That is correct, Chairman Marnik. If I may continue on that point. As to what, remember, Tom had said, I think the proper procedure is to have it, if a modified motion relative to that specific issue, whether or not the zoning determination on its face should be removed. Commissioner Evers has an obligation and a duty to enforce the codes, and he can do so properly. This just simply isn't the proper path at this time. And having the opportunity to come back in front of the board, if necess, if necessary, that's perfectly fine. We're capable of doing so and have the argument then. But I think it has to be done procedurally, properly, properly. And it, it just simply wasn't the first time through. And it's, it's required to do so. And I, I think any appeal of this, appeal of this particular hearing would be a, a very easy issue regarding the inappropriate initial letter on June 23rd, 2020. The case law is very clear on this, is that notice needs to provide the actual violation of the note. Notice of the violation alleged.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Mulligan, please.
Yeah, I, I'm struck with turning all the town employees into lawyers as they do, as they do their jobs. It's an issue I have even with this board, that everybody has to be a lawyer to serve anywhere in this town. Presumably, the reason the notice is insufficient was it, it didn't convey the purpose for the violation. Yet your, your own submissions to us indicate that you understood clearly the purpose of the violation and what the violation was for. To, to say that it doesn't, doesn't, it, it may have, you may understand fully what the purpose was, but that our building, our building inspector didn't use the proper legal terminology in his notice, to me is ridiculous. That's gonna, that'll just have, you, you understood what the problem was. You understood why he was citing you. Your, your communications indicate that thoroughly. And so what's the point of making a building commissioner into a practicing attorney?
If I may, you're absolutely incorrect, Mr. Mulligan. We don't say that in our papers. We actually say the opposite in that. We question whether or not, is it, is it because it's a boat? Is it the location of the boat? What is the actual thing that he's arguing against? Is it because it's a sign?
You mean a large structure that has the firm's name?
If I may finish.
You were concerned it was there because we were concerned it was a boat?
The, concerned about the location of it. Are you making a determination that it can't be placed there? Are you making a determination that it could be placed somewhere else where it was previously located? You don't know those things because of the actual citation.
Were you familiar with the terms? Were you familiar with the terms of our permit? There to be no signage? And you thought we, the issue then was where the boat was located with the big name of the firm? That you thought that the commissioner was concerned about the boat size and not the fact there's a name and a sign in violation of the conditions of your permit?
I would request Chairman Marnik to instruct Mr. Mulligan to refrain from interrupting me when it's asked a question, and I'm attempting to answer it.
No, Dean, Mr. Chairman, I apologize.
Mr. Mulligan, interrupt you at all, sir.
Mr. Mark, Chairman Marnik, he did twice. Wait to be called on.
Mr. Cole, please. I, I want to hear from you, too.
I, I agree with Mr. Mulligan. Let's get on with the presentation. This property has been a nuisance to this board. The issue is the sign. There was clearly a prohibition on signs on this property. Let's not waste everyone's time. Those that have come to be heard tonight, the rest of my fellow board members, with another application, another day, another hearing. Let, let's get on with it.
I agree. I rule. There's no mystery here. Proceed, Mr. Fernando Bianco.
Sure. With that, we go into the, the actual allegations of whether or not this constitutes a sign or whether it is a boat. Specifically, the requirements of Town Code require that every boat that is unregistered be named. It does not decipher how you can name your boat. But you can name it whatever you choose. You can name it whatever you like, naming it after the, the company, naming it after yourself, naming it after your children. You can name a boat whatever you like. There is no regulation within the town as to the location that you can place a boat. There, there is nothing in the Town Code or the bylaws that you are overseeing that, that has any prevention as to where you can place such boats. Wherefore, Mr. Feen is entitled to name his boat whatever he chooses. He chose to name it Atlantic Workshop. And in doing so, he's also required for unregistered boats, which this is, for unregistered boats under the Town Code, not the town bylaws, Town Code, Chapter 139, Section 3, I believe. You, you are required for an unregistered boat to have the name of the owner of the boat on the boat, which he does. He hasn't, has the, he is the, Atlantic Workshop is the owner of that boat. It has the name of the owner of that boat on the boat. So wherefore, you're requiring, he's doing as he is required under the Town Code. He has put the name of the owner of the boat on the boat and placed the boat on his property, which he is entitled to do. There is nothing in the town bylaws that prevents an individual from having a boat, placing a boat, having a boat on their properties, or where they so select to, to do so. Wherefore, the, the boat in and of itself is appropriate. The boat name is appropriate and required under the, and under that specific code. So that issue is, should be resolved and should be the element of the boat is approved before we get into whether or not it's a sign. It is required that you name the boat and you're permitted to have a boat. There is no gray area in this. I'd like to discuss that before we get into the third measure of, of the issues here.
I'd rather hear from you, your, the rest of your arguments.
Certainly. If we have to, then, if the, if the board determines that it is, that those regulations somehow do not apply for Mr. Feen or Atlantic Workshop, that the permission to have a boat not written in the code does not apply to him, that the requirement for him to name his boat and have on there the name owner of the boat does not apply to him for some reason, and determines that it is, it is a sign. We would argue, again, that Chapter 165 that we've, we have been through before, for home occupancy, which he has been allowed by special permit, allows to have a boat or a sign that is under six feet in square, uh, square feet. In this particular instance, if you were to measure the amount of, of language that is on that boat, it is 4.99 square feet as it is measured. So it is under the six-foot permission that is allowed without special permit, that is allowed as of right as a home occupancy business. So that would be permitted, even if you consider the boat a sign, which we do not. Again, it is simply a boat named after the company, which he is required to do. So in those instances, relative to the legal aspects of it, I think it is quite clear. A, the zoning determination letter has no efficacy. It absolutely is invalid and has no power here. And the, I don't think the board has the right to be able to make any determinations on it, as it is improper under the law. Two, the boat in and of itself is allowed in this town. They, you could have had codes and written language that the bylaws or Town Code doesn't permit boats. You don't have that, unlike other towns in this community. So he's permitted to have a boat. He is required to name and have the boat have language on it that shows the ownership. He does. He was following all those regulations. And even if you want to get in to whether or not it is a sign, he's permitted to have that sign. Now, relative to the other cases that are at issue, again, one, it's not named in the violation. Two, it is specifically not named in the agenda for tonight. So the opening of those would require a special public hearing. The only thing at issue tonight is whether or not that June 23rd, 2020 letter of violation from Commissioner, Mr. Evers is appropriate or not. And we say that it is not. I would also like to take this opportunity to address the 440-plus people that signed a petition that agree with this position, that agree that Mr. Feen should be permitted to have this boat, this beautiful display of a boat on the property. I would also like to take this opportunity to acknowledge 180 comments or, and more on Facebook that have commented on the, the Kip Cod Times article on this positive in support of Mr. Feen and this boat on his property. I, I know Mr. Feen would like an opportunity to address the board in a moment. But I, I would like to acknowledge those individuals, you know, hundreds and hundreds of both town residents and neighbors that drive by the property on Main Street and realize how beautiful and wonderful the boat is, and see it as a work of art, which he's entitled to have. That, see it as a boat that he is entitled to have. The town is by far in support of Mr. Feen's, of this boat and this beautiful design and this enhancement to the community. That's all that Mr. Feen has attempted to do throughout his entire time here, is enhance the community of Orleans and have, and have and raise his family here in a wonderful, beautiful community. And he's contributed to that every single day. And he's attempting to continue to contribute to that every single day. And in doing so, in the, what Mr. Evers is attempting to do on this board has attempted to do or decides, wants to do, is to limit that, is to limit the small business opportunities, to, to limit the beautification of Main Street. And the town is wildly against that, and it has been demonstrated very vociferously from the town and the members and neighbors that have supported Mr. Feen in, in that regard. And with, but that, I would like Mr. Feen to address the board, have the opportunity to do so.
Well, I just want to say that I, I, I resent the applicant telling us, this board, what our motives are and how we enforce zoning bylaw. The fact of the matter is that we allow the home occupation, that there's a condition that says that there's no, not to be any sign on the property. And the fact of the matter is, you didn't, there's no, in temporary restraining order or interlocutory order from the Superior Court preventing the town or the building commissioner from enforcing that interdiction, that there be no sign concerning the occupation. And yet it's been done. Now I'll hear from Mr. Feen.
If I may, Chairman Marnik, address that one point that you, you raised. One, the Superior Court matter is inapplicable to this particular zoning determination. The appeal relates solely to the June 23rd, 2020 zoning determination. If the zoning determination was related intentionally to any of the, the special permit, it is required to address that in the actual zoning determination. It's required to state that is what is in violation of, and alleged as such. He does not do so in the zoning determination. Therefore, the Superior Court matter nor the special permit are at issue in this matter. I, I appreciate your concern, but those are not at issue in this. It's really, you have to look solely and strictly at the June 23rd, 2020 letter.
Very well. Mr. Feen, can you cast some light rather than heat here?
Thank you very much, everyone. I appreciate it. I know, I, I just wrote down a brief statement here. I understand that this has become a very passionate argument for the neighbors of Orleans, okay? My wife and I, before purchasing 94 Main Street, I personally went in and met with George Missouri, the, as we all know, the Orleans Director of Planning and Community Development. I was told he's the right man to talk to if we were going to be putting this type of business there. I explained to him at length what I wanted to do, which was put my, move my business from Chatham, where it had been for 10 years, and bring it over to Orleans. In doing so, he assured me in that meeting that as long as I followed the building permits and built within your regulations, as well as before I started building my furniture, as well as Mr. Evers gave me the same information before I started building the furniture and the sculptures, that I would go through the zoning, zoning board of appeals and make sure that we get their blessing. So basically, having been assured, we went forth and purchased the house. At that point, I mean, and this is where, this is where it gets a little challenging. So we, we moved the kids, four and five years old at that time, put them into the local schools here. I worked with a lot of the local organizations for, you know, for community outreach, affordable housing, all sorts of the, the school programs, making donations on a very regular basis to the community. The town of Orleans, it's been losing businesses at a pretty rapid pace recently, every time we look around. So we're, we're looking to basically encourage the members of the community here to look towards resources it has in businesses like mine, and not to make, to make us feel unwelcome and alienated in the community like this. It's a, you know, it's a plea. This is not, no one came in there to try to do a basic.
Um it's a, you know, it's a plea. This is not, no one came in there to try to do a bait and switch on anybody. Um we came in with full intentions and outlined them to everyone um that we that we were told were the right people to talk to. As you know, you probably all of you know, many of it's about four media outlets have picked this up so far. I don't want to continue down this road, but I will not relent that a small business and an artist in Cape Cod should be able to support their family. Right? And we and I know all of you would feel the same way. We're all fighting the same battle here, trying to keep uh trying to keep our families happy and trying to make sure that we're able to uh to pay the bills. So uh I am looking to to run a small business there and not step on anyone's toes. Uh we don't run a business that is has at all a volume uh that we have in other types of businesses that you have pointed out in years past. Um but I would just like to end and tell you that um I feel as though this board has gone out of its way to deny me the chance to succeed in the town of Orleans. You've granted others the same exact privileges that we're asking for in the same zones and you have not made them run through uh the I believe was the first ever person to be on a annual review from your board. Um can't have employees, can't mean what we do is try to better the community. So in terms of that, um I'd like to be met with some reason and um and I would like to 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 end this this nonsense. Um the whole process is costing the town a lot of money. It could be better well-spent in a whole lot of other areas. Um ten-plus years I've been running Atlantic Workshop. Its purpose has been to um celebrate Cape Cod and repurpose uh many of its many of its treasures and sustainable art and furnishings. Um and without artists like myself and small businesses like mine, um Cape Cod is only going to have its history. It's not going to have a future, right? I appreciate you taking the time and listening to me tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there anyone uh else wishing to uh speak in favor of the appeal from Mr. Evers's determination? Does any member of the board have any quest questions of uh Mr. Feen or his counsel?
I won.
Mr. Taubling.
Mr. Feen, notwithstanding your best intentions, which I will take for granted, are you aware that the board and some of your members of the board and some members of the public believe that you misrepresented your intentions from the beginning and are holding that misrepresentation against you?
I mean, and that's one of the reasons I pointed out that I had sat with uh Mr. Missouri to start with. Um there, no one's intending to uh to misrepresent what we do here. It's a workshop with they, you know, it's a small workshop where we have uh made furniture for, you know, twelve years, so.
About that, sir. It's not about that. It's about representations about. I don't I don't want to go through them. Uh the board feels, I can't speak for the board. Members of the board feel that you misrepresented your intentions from Jump Street. I think the thing you said about Mr. Missouri was quite interesting. I don't know what weight people would give it. It's the first I heard that. Others may have heard that before. You know, this argument about the pluses and the minuses of the art and the culture and the vitality that it provides fall short in face of the misrepresentations that the board feels it has had to deal with.
If if I may, this is uh Attorney Paul Bianco again on behalf of Mr. Feen. The understanding what Mr. Taub is uh saying stating and and asking about, um I understand the concerns, however, the what is before the board at this particular moment is again the June twenty-third, twenty-twenty letter and whether or not it it is valid or invalid, whether or not it has power or doesn't, whether or not it it is about it. The uh I I I don't want to dismiss what uh you're asking, and I I believe that um Mr. Feen has addressed that that concern. Um but I do want to remind the board that is it is strictly about the June twenty-third, twenty-twenty letter, and that's what we're appealing. So that I I just want to remind the board of that obligation.
Mr. Cole.
It's a point of order. Are we going to do Q and A with the applicant or finish public comment first?
Oh, I've I've asked for any other sub uh, didn't I ask for anyone wishing to speak and support? I heard no response. Anyone speak wishing to speak in opposition? And I hear no response. Oh, but the file is replete with correspondence, uh which has been posted to the uh town website in connection with this.
There are individuals with their hands raised.
I'm promoting them in as panelists so that way they can.
All right, thank, thank you, Miss Eve.
You're welcome.
Ms. Alstrom, would do would you, did you want to speak?
Ms. Alstrom is.
Oh, sorry. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, I can hear you. I think we all can. Did you want to say something?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that we are um opposed to the sign. The lettering on the boat is upside down, so it clearly is not a functional lettering on the boat. It is a sign. And there's actually four signs on the building at this point. Uh there's his SUV parked facing Main Street. There's the boat sign. There's a sign over his doorway that says Atlantic Workshop. And then there's another sign that doesn't say Atlantic Workshop, but it's post, it's it's kind of what his goods are. He sort of, he's um displaying his goods, which is also in violation. And he has misrepresented himself from day one. So I just wanted to put that in. And then I also wanted to just say that when this decision is filed, I'd like to be notified about that, but that's it.
Ms. Alstrom, for clarity, could you uh tell us uh where you live?
Oh, yeah, I'm at uh ninety-six Main Street. I'm across Tom's Street um from Scott Feen's Enterprise.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Who else wishes to speak? This, could you identify yourself, please?
Sure. Um my name is Lindy Austro and I live at ninety-three Main Street, right across from Mr. Feen. And I can't speak to the letter that Tom wrote. I I Mr. Evers wrote. I haven't seen it, so um I'm sorry, I can't address that. But I would say that from the beginning, I've been following this obviously from the very beginning of this issue. And when this all started, you know, Mr. Feen said that he was running his dream workshop where all of his business would be conducted outside, you know, he would go out to clients um and he would he would do the work at ninety-four Main Street, but there would be no traffic, there would be no retail, there would be no sales, and for that he shouldn't need signage. He's clearly running a retail operation. He advertises that on Facebook and his website. Um there's definitely traffic. There's a there's now numbers of cars parked, there's signage, um and it's still a residential zone. Um so I do think there has been a misrepresentation as to the nature and character of the business. But as I said in my latter or several letters, if Mr. Feen would stick to the conditions of the special permit that was granted, I don't think he would find he had opposition, you know, from the abutters. Because those conditions were were set by the board so that he could run a small business, a customary home occupation in a residential zone. And it's when he's going beyond those conditions, when he's breaking those conditions or ignoring them, that's when we are opposing this. So, you know, if he wants to stick to them, go for it. Be a small businessman, do your art, do your furniture, whatever you want to do. But please remember, this is a residential neighborhood. We live here. We don't want trucks and cars. We hear the machinery. We see all of the traffic going in and out. There are sometimes eight or nine cars parked in and out of that. And it and it's exactly what we asked the zoning Board of Appeals to avoid when we asked them to put those conditions on in the first place. So we were, I mean, I can only speak for myself. I can't speak for the other abutters, but I thought those conditions were fair and he should stick to them. And if it's impossible for him to run his business, then move to a business district. You know, i- it's very simple. Let the zoning board, you know, manage the zoning as they're supposed to. And that's it. Thank you.
But the record reflect that your correspondence was received, has been circulated and was posted um uploaded to the town website. Uh Panda Bianco, once we hear all of the uh comments from the public, then uh we'll recognize you again. Ms. Noel, if you want to talk?
Oh, thank you. Um, well, I wasn't sure if you were going to read our letters into the record or no?
Your letter was received and and has been circulated. I prefer not to read it at this at this point when there's been unless there's a question about it or some clarification or that that you need to.
No, but I I made some points in there about the same things that that Lindy was just um speaking to that the board, I think, had carefully deliberated at the first hearing um to formulate the conditions that they put in the special permit. And Mr. Feen agreed to them at that hearing. And I think that they should be maintained. They were well thought out. They're reasonable. They're understandable. It's it's not really the up to the board to create a situation where Mr. Feen can run a successful business. He had a successful business in Chatham and he decided not to follow that same model in Orleans, so he's restricted in what kind of a business he can run across the street. And I think what Mr. Taub was saying was true. He misrepresented himself from the very beginning. And now he's pretty much running a retail operation over there.
Uh, Ms. Ms. Noel, can you state the the benefit of the board, where you live?
I live at ninety-seven Main Street, which is directly across the street from ninety-four.
Do you have anything specific you might want to say about the boat or whether it's whether you consider that, or wouldn't you think of that as a sign or whether it's a boat?
Um, well, I read the the town sign code and it seems that it it does constitute a sign by the definition, which I put in my letter, so I don't have that handy right here.
Very well. So any other public comment? This is your opportunity. Anyone who's uh on with us now to uh make yourself known. Mr. Runyon, did you want to talk?
Um, yeah, um, my name's Frederick Runyon. I live at fourteen Pond Road um and have a property at forty-nine uh South Orleans Road. And um I just want to make some sort of general comments about this. Um, we dealt earlier in the year, or maybe it was last year, with um a similar sort of situation with the um Beth Bishop property and a special permit that was uh requested to change the use of that property and and, you know, we were, as abutters, um we were, you know, much more alarmed as that impacted us personally than we are by by this case. But the the issue is um this sort of incremental erosion of the zoning laws. Um, you know, in in the Beth Bishop case, the applicant was looking to basically uh, you know, be permitted to conduct a a Marina business um and and, you know, um retail business and storage on a limited business zone property. And uh and, you know, earlier this year, there was, I think the address is thirty-one Oak Street um in East Orleans where, you know, it it's it it's a sort of um catches everybody, or at least it looks to me like it catches everybody off guard with um, you know, what do we do with this situation and and how will we manage this moving into the future? Um, given our um sort of, you know, mission to to perform as stewards of this town and its character and its future. Um, and so for me, this particular case we're talking about, it it the 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 primary issue is this is a residential property. And it, uh, you know, yes, um, the applicant has every right to petition for a permit um to conduct a business and you know, uh, I would say the zoning board also is perfectly within its rights to put restrictions on any permit they might grant or to deny the permit outright. You know, I I'm I'm moved by the conversation about you know, um supporting local artisans and um young families and the, you know, the the sort of vision of the future of the town. But I I think that is secondary to you know, the issue of this incremental erosion of the protections that the zoning laws provide to all the residents of Orleans. And, you know, it's 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 like one little step at a time. You know, you you say for this guy, well, we like what he does and and, uh, you know, and he's a nice guy and it's cool and let's let him do it. And I I just don't know where that leads us. So I personally feel um that uh that the permit with all of the original restrictions um would be appropriate. And I think that some of the restrictions were lifted is uh something Mr. Feen should be grateful for. And I think that the the behavior that we're considering tonight about the sign is uh disappointing, you know, it it's I I just hang on, I I I think it was Shakespeare that said, first, let's kill all the lawyers. You know, the 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 idea of finding some, I don't know, technicalities that say this thing isn't a sign, um when I kind of think that um, you know, common sense should prevail. Um, it it's and and to hear the the that the sign is, even if it's a sign, it's in compliance because the area of the lettering is, you know, whatever. So, you know, so what? You're going to build a thirty-foot by forty-foot sign and just put small letters in the middle of it and say it complies with the signage regulations? I I just want to support the board and and say, you know, um, you you I I recognize you got a tough job and And, um, I'm, I'm for uh, being very careful about how we move into the future. And there are some things that we, we have yet to resolve, I guess. So that's it. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Runyon. Let the record reflect that Mr. Silver hasn't spoken, but he did have a, uh, did indicate a chat comment which said something to the effect of whether a boat is a sign or a sign is a boat. Kind of similar to what you just said, Mr. Runyon. Is there anyone else wishing to talk, Mr. Diaz?
Yes, thank you.
By the way, where's your, where's your, where do you live?
Oh, I, I live in South Orleans, Mr. Marnik.
What do you have to say?
Well, you, you'll be happy to know that I don't have a presentation on this particular matter.
Well, I, but I'd be even happier to hear some, some kind of rational insight.
Okay. Um, look, I, I read through this material and it seems to me that your board, by the way, I'm supporting your board in this. Um, it seems to me that your board took actions with respect to the conditions to, to prevent retail activity from or at the property. And I guess we could define that even further to say any discernible uh, retail activity conducted from or at the property. Now, presuming that you have the right under, um, under, under our bylaws to, to do that, to place that condition, that, that, that overriding condition with respect to this, assuming that's, that's correct. And there is now evidence that, um, Mr. Feen is in fact conducting retail activity from or at the property that's discernible by the public and by the abutters. Then I would suggest, rather than talking about signs and whatnot, that you sort of notice on Mr. Feen that he's in violation of a key, a fundamental condition upon which you granted that, that permit. And you sort of notice that he's to stop his violations. And if he doesn't stop his violations, then you will rescind his permit to conduct a business. So if you have the right, if you have the right to, to, to prevent the retail activity and he's conducting retail activity, if that's the facts, then don't play softball with this. Uh, 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 serve him notice and then go forward and rescind the permit if he doesn't behave. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Diaz. Uh, Mr. Panabianco, your repotting right?
Um, yes, thank you Chairman Marnik. I'll be very brief to address the concerns of, I believe, Mr. Runyon and, uh, Ms. Allstrom, that has been presented. Uh, all of those concerns that were raised were relative to the special permit and prior actions, they're not before this board. The special permit is not before this board. The conditions thereof are not before this board. It is only the June 23rd, 2020 zoning determination that is before this board this evening. That said, I would note, just for the public's knowledge and for specifically Mr. Runyon's knowledge, that he's asking for the board, the board to uphold the, uh, the, the bylaws. And we agree, because we're in compliance with the bylaws. Mr. Feen is in compliance with the bylaws. If we had served, um, a records request upon the town for any other similar situations in which the town had had special conditions that they asserted for an annual review, there are none. Special conditions for, that they had for anyone else relative and impermissible, where they did not allow a sign, there are none. The, the, the special conditions that were placed upon Mr. Feen have never been enacted before by this board. And that's why we're asking, and in the Superior Court, just from Mr. Runyon's knowledge, to remove those, those conditions because we do not, do not believe that they are within the board's ability to do so. But that doesn't matter for tonight's purposes. I just wanted to provide, um, you know, the Allstroms and Mr. Runyon, this knowledge. Um, what is before the board is only whether or not the zoning determination is valid. We argue that it is not. Both because the letter of the law requires a specific notice that wasn't provided. And that the letter of the law, the code and the bylaws that this town has adopted, permit a boat and require it to be named, and Mr. Feen has done so. That is permissible. The activities under the bylaws that Mr. Feen has done relative to this boat and this boat only that we are discussing tonight are permissible. He has followed those laws and we're asking the board to acknowledge that.
Thank you, sir.
And Mr. Chairman, I've had my hand raised for quite some time. My name is Dave Feresi.
Oh, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Uh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry to go out of order, but I had, I thought it was, I thought you could see.
I, I didn't, I'm sorry, I, I didn't know that, you know.
Is it okay if I just give a shout?
That's my technical error, I think, Mr. Feresi.
Okay. Thank you. My name is Dave Feresi. I live at 100 Tonsit Road. I'm not in a butter, but I'm within one mile of Atlantic Workshop. I submitted a, a letter to the board via, via the chairman and also started the petition in favor of, um, supporting the Atlantic Workshop's continued business operations at the four, what I call the four corners. Uh, I'm also a retail merchant in Chatham, so I have a lot of respect for having to deal with the, um, zoning board there as a retail merchant. And I know it's a difficult job sometimes to satisfy all that are involved with, uh, with existing laws and also with, you know, consideration for changing or, or adopting or moving laws. I can't speak to anything that was misrepresented on behalf of Scott Feen and Atlantic Workshop to the board. But it, as far as I knew, knowing Scott's business in Chatham and then being a neighbor in Orleans, I thought, uh, it was pretty clear that he was going to operate the Atlantic Workshop in its form today on the property at the Four Corners. And then subsequently, there is issues related to signage. I can tell you that I've, I, I basically go up and down that road many times uh, in the course of the day and probably too many times. And I, and I have been on his property several times when there's been potential clients for his type of craftsmanship, where someone would bring either an artifact or, or, um, or some type of drawing or some type of idea. I have never seen any, any, anything any more than maybe two or three cars, including my own, relative to the workshop. I know that his, uh, his house has some guests and there's, there's cars there. But I've, I've never encountered any issue at the Four Corners that's directly, that's responsible for traffic or parking or anything that I would say would be unusual that, that would be associated with the workshop. And as far as a retail operation, I'm not sure what the formal definition of that is. But if you walk into his workshop, it's basically walking into a, looks like my father's old machine shop. Uh, there isn't a point of sale in, in there. There isn't anything with, uh, uh, retail tags on it. He's not trying to draw people into, to park in his driveway and come in and buy a fifteen hundred to twenty-five hundred dollar piece of art that someone wants to put in their house. So I'm a little bit, I'm obviously a strong supporter of, of, um, merchants, artisans, anything that would help the culture improve and continue to improve the culture of Orleans. Um, I could understand if the abutters felt that Scott Feen had said, I'm going to have this workshop.
No, 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 we allow some latitude there, Mr. Feresi.
I'm sorry.
I really want to, can you want to restrict your remarks to the boat?
Oh, okay. Yes, the, the boat, the boat where it is today may be contentious for, for reasons of signage. I can understand that. But that boat was on that property prior to that and it was, it was closer to the workshop itself. So I think if, if the issue is where the boat is, is one thing. I see that as just being representative of his art. That's the way I see it. I don't see that as being a, a sign that's related to the sign that's on his workshop itself. It's, it's basically a display of his art and his craftsmanship. That's the way I see it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. Um, members of the board, uh, I, uh, am designating the following members as, to vote on the question as to whether the building commissioner was erroneous in issuing the letter, uh, which he did to the applicant. Following members will consider Mr. Mulligan, Mr. Eichelt, Mr. Cole, um, Mr. Taub and Mr. Van Dees. I was also, I voted, uh, on a, a couple of the previous, um, hearings with this applicant. Tonight I will only facilitate rather than vote. Uh, is there any, are, are there any other comments to be made by any members of the board? The motion would be to Mr. Taub.
No, no, please, I'd like to hear the motion, sir.
Well, the motion that probably would be appropriate would be to, um, uh, deny the applicant's appeal from the decision determination of the building inspector or to grant the appeal.
Mindful of Mr. Mulligan's injunction that we shouldn't have to be lawyers to serve on this.
Oh, the public is, we, you know, you know, the three of us on.
You, you know, you know, the famous law that, you know, when the law is against you, you argue the facts. And when the facts are against you, you argue the law. And so here we have a very strong and, um, potentially successful argument about a defect in the construction of the letter. And so I will say again that the more prudent course for us is to allow the motion and then let the chips fall where they may. My fear being that if we deny the motion, we're looking at an appeal that, I don't know how to phrase this, but, uh, it's not really my own opinion, but I'll offer it as such for these purposes that makes this a crapshoot, that makes it a 50-50 call. And why bother with that over some technicality? I'm complete.
We still need a motion to move the, uh, the application forward.
Muted.
I've seen Mr. Mulligan, um, but I can't hear him.
I'll make that motion to deny the, the appeal and to approve the commissioner's letter. I found, I found the commissioner's letter conveyed the information that was necessary. I found that expressions, I didn't understand what the purpose of the letter of the finding was to be disingenuous, frankly. So I, I will deny the, move to deny the motion.
Mr. Mulligan has moved to deny the appeal of the applicant of the determination of the building inspector. It's a second.
Second.
Cole, second. Uh, any discussion on the motion? Ms. Eichelt?
Yeah, I just, um, I think if, um, Bruce Taub, if I understood what you were saying, uh, it is that it's likely that, um, that even though it's clear to everybody what was in Tom Ever's letter, um, that it may be, it, it may be, if it were taken to court, it may be inadequate. And so it would need to be done over again. Um, so is that what you were saying basically? Yes? Yeah, okay. Okay, I can't hear you, but I think I'm reading your lips. It says yes. Yeah.
I'm sorry, yes.
So that, that weighs, I'll just say, that weighs fairly heavy, heavily with me and it has nothing to do with the merits. Um, we all know that there was the prohibition of signage. I think, I certainly believe the boat is a sign. And I understand what Tom Ever's letter was saying. However, it weighs heavily with me that it may not meet the technical requirements.
May I address that comment, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Eichelt, I, I understand your position and, and Mr. Taub's. But I take the position, I, and I'll take it to the day I die, that we have to push back against the society and even courts that continue to try to make all of us into lawyers. It's just, it's just not a way you can run this town or run any organization. That you have, before you can do anything, you gotta check with a lawyer to make sure that the certain form is, is in, is in proper legal accord. When the purpose of the notice was evident, I think, to the, uh, to the people who received it. And I think to anybody who understood the, the background of this case and all, is all the participants and certainly the principal participants understood it, would understand the purpose of Mr. Ever's, uh, notice and understand why, why it was given. And if you, if, if we have to anticipate what some judge in, in Hyannis or Barnstable County Court is gonna, is gonna think about how we do things here. And, and I, I just hope at some point the judiciary realizes that we can't run every little department and every municipality and every governmental entity by lawyers. And I think the purpose is to convey the meeting and the meeting was conveyed. When it was in the form that was specifically allowed in this case in Haverhill, as opposed to Havre Hill, uh, it's, it's, uh, it's, it's not relevant, I don't think, in Orleans.
I, I understand and agree with your frustration. I do, I do. But it seems to me not that difficult a matter to redo the letter with the appropriate technical language. And it, and so, and it shouldn't be that difficult whenever those kind of letters go to make sure to do the tech, the right technical language. So I understand it and I agree. I'm, I'm not a lawyer and I don't want to be. Um, but however, um, it, it just, it's, it's a small technical matter that I, I think could be corrected.
Thank you, Ms. Eichelt. Extremely clear. Are, are there any, any further discussion by the members of the board? Then I'll roll call the vote. Uh, Mr. Mulligan?
Gonna unmute?
Y- y- yes.
Um, Ms. Eichelt?
No.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Taub?
No.
And Ms. Van Dees?
Yes.
Ms. Van Dees, was that yes or no?
Yes.
The, there are three yes and two no, therefore the motion fails. Uh, Mr. Waugh and myself will be recorded and standing, uh, both present. Uh, therefore, the, um, appeal of the applicant is, uh, successful. Members of the board, there, there's no further business to come before the meeting. Are there any comments outside our agenda tonight?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to make one statement if I may. And that is, I want to apologize to my fellow board members for getting a little heated in my, in my exchange. I, I'm sorry if I embarrassed the board. I, I feel like I did and I apologize.
Um, thank you for the apology. I, for one, saw nothing untoward. Right, I, uh, this was a long night, members of the board, and you... And you have my heartfelt gratitude for the hard work that you've done and always do.
Mr. Marnik, could I make a special notice of the staff from the town who are so helpful to us, including Sarah and Stacy, please?
That would be, uh, uh, so gracious, folks.
Thank you.
Just a point of clarity, if I could?
Yes.
So there was a motion to overturn the appeal and that motion failed to garner four votes. Um, does there need to be a motion to affirm the appeal, uh, to conclude the last case?
No, I don't think so. No, I, I don't, I don't see that, Matt. That, that would mean that the, uh, the, the building commissioner's, uh, action was annulled. I think we all understand that. We.
And yet there was no motion to, to annul.
All right, let's clarify it then. With, uh, then we need a, um, motion to, no, the, uh, building commissioners.
You're gonna get the same vote.
We, 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 we would. That's right, Matt, we would.
Right, that's why I'm confused at what we've actually determined.
We've granted the appeal. That, that's what, that would be effective. Because the way, the way it was presented. Uh, Bruce?
No, no, I agree.
I agree too. I agree also. Doesn't, doesn't that mean eventually that Mr. Evers will have to reissue the letter in what would be considered an acceptable form?
If he so chooses, yes.
The bill, the building commissioner has that discretion to do, yes. Nothing here is, that, that letter was in effect, uh, null. That, that stopped Mr. Evers from doing whatever he feels is his responsibility under the, um, building code or the, uh, town code.
I'd like to hear from opposing counsel because he's, you know, so well-educated. I want to learn. But you can deny me my request. I saw his hand up, that's all.
I just had my hand in my hand. I had nothing further.
That's what you call real discretion. Very well, then I'll entertain a motion to return.
So moved.
Uh, in a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Good night, members of the board and.
Good night.
Thank you.